Alright, hey, welcome everybody. We want to say welcome back to our Daniel Bible study. We are in session fourteen, chapter ten. Session fourteen, chapter ten. Want to say thank you so much for joining us. We have a few weeks left in the book of Daniel, and tonight we're going to talk about spiritual warfare. Uh, we're going to dive deep into this subject of spiritual warfare because of the days and the times that we live in. And so I want to say thank you so much for joining us. If you're with us for the first time, welcome. Please go to our website, our church's website, which is WhitestoneChurchTX.com. If you'll email us on the contact menu, we'd be happy to deliver our notes to you. We have notes for each session. Uh, we'll deliver those straight to your inbox. Uh, if you'd like to download that PDF right now, go to the video drop-down screen, find the Daniel Bible study. We're in session or part fourteen. And so you can download the notes. I want to encourage you to grab your Bible, grab something to write with, grab your notes. Uh, read the Word of God, write in the Word of God, write in your notes, really study the book of Daniel for yourself. What we are able to accomplish in a one-hour session uh, once a week, uh, is really just going to be skimming the surface. Uh, but if you'll dive into the Word of God yourself on your own, God will open up your eyes to see Scripture uh, the way that Scripture is intended to see, uh, to be seen. And so let's pray, and we'll get started. And uh, let's dive into Daniel, chapter ten, session fourteen. "God, we ask for your blessing, we ask for your peace, we ask for your joy. Holy Spirit, would you open up our mind and our hearts to see your word, digest your word, hear your word, understand your word? God, prepare us for the purpose in which we exist. In Jesus' name, amen." Almost every man and woman in the Bible that God used felt inferior to the purpose of the plan in which God had for them. Jonah felt like his message to Nineveh would not be received, but God did mighty things through him. Gideon felt like he was the least of the least in his tribe and his clan, but yet God used him to deliver his people with an army of three hundred. Samson, in the beginning of his life, trusted his strength and his pride, but when he was in prison, he relied on the strength of the Lord, and the Bible says his hair grew again. It grew back, and God did more in Samson at the end of his life than he was able to accomplish during his life. Many men and women of the Bible felt inferior. There's a calling on your life, there's a calling of purpose that God has for you, and the enemy wants us to think that we can't accomplish it, or someone else should accomplish it for us, or God doesn't really want to use us, or... And God says, "Hey, listen, I've created you and purposed you for a reason. I've gifted you supernaturally to do something in the spiritual realm that nobody else can do." On the topic of spiritual warfare, I want us to dive into the understanding that there are angels, there's the Holy Spirit, there's God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit, there's the Word of God, there's the Body of Christ. These aren't just physical or symbolic things. These are spiritual weapons. This is spiritual warfare. On the enemy's side, there are demons, there are fallen angels, there is evil and corruption, greed, lust, pride. You know, we can name all the things of the enemy. And behind those, it's a spiritual warfare, a spiritual presence. And so when we look at the topic of spiritual warfare, I want us to see that there is the enemy, and there is holiness, there's evil, there is good. It's not just bad and good, it's evil and holiness. Evil versus holiness. And, and God is in control. One of the misconceptions of spiritual warfare is that God and Satan are equal foes, or that Satan is actually a threat to God and his kingdom. Satan is real, Satan is powerful, Satan has influence. But Satan is a created angel, a created being. So when we talk about angels, a lot of people love to talk about angels, but we tend to think that all angels are good. So in a lot of religious groups today, there's angel worship, there's angel talk. Uh, people talk about being visited by an angel. Uh, "The angels visited us, uh, and, and angel appeared to me." And those are true things, those are real supernatural occurrences in our natural realm. But the Scripture teaches us to test the angel, test the spirit, test it to see, is it a holy angel? Or is it an unholy angel? Is it an angel on a mission from God? Or is it a fallen angel on a mission from hell? Just because it's an angel doesn't mean that it's from God. Just because it's an angel doesn't mean that we can trust it. We have to test all things. Test to discover what is the spirit behind the supernatural event. Look at the first page of your notes. There's a really cool statement by Chuck Missler. It says, "The ultimate issue..." The ultimate issue is this. "We are in possession of a message, the Bible. We are in possession of a message of extraterrestrial origin. We're in possession of a message that came from outside our time domain, something that came outside of our realm, our atmosphere." This message wasn't just written by a bunch of men that lived a thousand years ago, or two thousand, or three thousand years ago. This message, this Bible, the text in here, was written by God who lives outside our time domain. It's an extraterrestrial message. If somebody says, "Hey, listen, I had an alien visit me, and he gave me this message," we would all want to know, what is this extraterrestrial being from outer space? What are they trying to say to us? Let's, let's investigate this thing. The Bible was written by God who does not live in our natural realm. Now, Jesus came and visited and lived in our natural realm for thirty-three and a half years of his life on earth. And yes, God is very much in our realm, but the message from God is from outside our time domain. So when we read the Bible, we need to understand this is a supernatural message that has to be interpreted by a supernatural being, i.e. the Holy Spirit, God himself. We are in possession of a message, the Bible, of extraterrestrial origin. It portrays us as objects of an unseen supernatural warfare. This Bible portrays, it paints the picture, that you and I are on a supernatural battlefield. We exist in this place called earth, but there is a battle that is being waged since Genesis, chapter three, when God told Eve, "I'm putting enmity between you and Satan. Satan, I'm putting enmity between you and the woman." That started when Adam and Eve ate the fruit. That started this supernatural warfare between God's created humans and God's created fallen angels. It portrays us as objects of an unseen supernatural warfare. Our eternal destiny depends upon our relationship with the winner of this cosmic conflict. Our eternal destiny depends upon our relationship with the winner of this cosmic conflict. What is your readiness in this encounter? That statement's deep. I want to encourage you to read it over and over and over, and really digest and understand, what is God saying to us? Here's the question. There are two forces. There is a holy God, and there is an unholy Satan. There is forces of holiness and forces of evil. One of those two forces is going to ultimately win the cosmic battle between good and evil. One of those two forces is ultimately going to win the battle of your soul. On your day of death, on the day that you breathe your last, how you have portrayed the extraterrestrial message of the Bible, and how you've seen your part in playing in this realm, on this field, on this battlefield, and who you ultimately put your trust in will determine whose side you're on, and who ultimately won the battle for your soul. Now, we know that God wins the battle, but there is a smaller war being waged for that of your soul. So let's dive into Daniel, uh, chapter ten, and let's look at a picture, a glimpse of supernatural warfare. Now, as we've read the last three chapters of Daniel, we've really been into visions and dreams about end times. Now, Daniel, the book shifts to a supernatural vision of what is going to happen and what is happening behind the scenes. When you read the book of Revelation, we see two different angles. One is from a heavenly perspective, one is from an earthly perspective. Daniel, like John, is beloved. He is, he is one of two people in the Bible called beloved. John was beloved, Daniel's beloved. And they write end-time books. They write books about the return of Christ. They write books and chapters of their books uh, in regard to the battle between Satan and God, holy and unholy forces. They write a battle. One, Revelation is played out on earth. Two, Daniel paints the picture of the supernatural battle that's happening. So let's dive into Daniel, chapter ten, and we'll read a few verses together. And I want us to see this battle between two forces. One is heavenly, one is evil, one is unheavenly. Here we go. In chapter ten, Daniel, chapter ten, verse one. "In the third year of Cyrus, king of Persia, a message was revealed to Daniel, whose name was called Belshazzar. The message was true, but for the appointed time." Now, we're underlining that. The message is true, but it's talking about a time of physical time period that isn't for Daniel's day. Daniel's having a vision of something that's going to happen, and we've been talking about that over the last few, few chapters. "The message was true, but the appointed time was long, and he understood the message, and he understood the vision. In those days, I, Daniel, was mourning three full weeks." Now, he's mourning because of the vision that he just had. If you remember what we read in Daniel, chapter eight, it really disturbs Daniel to see Israel and God's people on the run. It really disturbs to see these beasts that overtake the world, these different tyrants, if you will, these different kingdoms, these different demonic possessions. He is seeing end-time revelation in addition to the, the prophetic time periods that, that will exist after his existence, or that will come after his existence. "In those days, I was mourning for three full weeks. I ate no pleasant food, no meat or wine came into my mouth, nor did I anoint myself at all till three whole weeks were fulfilled." Verse four. "Now, on the twenty-fourth day of the first month, as I was by the side of the great river, that is, the Tigris..." Here's what he sees. He lifts his eyes and looks, and behold, a certain man clothed in linen. Now, before we read verse five and, and the following verses, he's going to see a glimpse into the angelic realm. He's going to not just see a physical being approach him, he is going to see an angelic being approach him. Now, when we look at all the angels in Scripture that approach a person, everybody's response is pretty much the same. They're in awe, they are, are surprised, they are fearful many times. They don't know how to react, they're somewhat stunned and paralyzed. Here we go, verse five. "I lifted my eyes and looked, and behold, a certain man clothed in linen, whose waist was girded with gold of euphors. His body was like burrell, his face like the appearance of lightning..." Lighting, uh, his eyes like torches of fire, his arms and feet like burnished bronze in color, and the sound of his words like the voice of a multitude." Now, this has very much reference and symbol, uh, the same description that John gives us of Jesus Christ in Revelation, chapter one. So when you read John's account of Jesus Christ in Revelation one, there's a lot of symbolism or some similarities uh, of what Daniel's describing here. Uh, not to go into a, a, a lot of discussion theologically, but this is most likely not Jesus. This is an angel. Uh, and the biggest reason is, we'll read in a little bit, that this, that this angel needs help because he's in, he's, he's been captured by a demonic fallen angel, and Jesus Christ would not need the help of an angel to be rescued. Uh, so therefore, that, that would give you a little side note that this is probably not Jesus Christ. But it is a glimpse into the angelic heavenly hosts realm of what an angel may look like, or does look like. Here we go, verse seven. "And I, Daniel, alone saw the vision; for there were men with me who did not see the vision, but a great terror fell upon them, so they fled to hide themselves." Now, Daniel has some other people with him. Daniel sees the vision, vision of this angel. He can see, but the men with him can't see into the spiritual realm. We're going to read another context where that happens in Second Kings. But this is not unusual for people that are in tune with God to see into the supernatural, and those who God doesn't want to see, or those who are not in tune with Him, can't see. So there are different levels of faith, there are different levels of, of, um, uh, our relationship with God that will allow some people to see and experience things of the Spirit that other people just aren't there yet, or God says, "No, I don't want you to experience that." So that's what happened. Verse eight. "Therefore, I was left alone when I saw this great vision, and no strength remained in me; for my vigor was turned to frailty, and I retained no strength. Yet I heard the sound of his words, and while I heard the sound of his words, I was in a deep sleep on my face, with my face to the ground." So this angel has a message for Daniel. This angel delivers a, a, a message from God's throne to Daniel. So before we talk much more, we know of a delivery angel in Scripture. There are three archangels mentioned in Scripture. Now, an archangel is an angel, but it is a type of angel. There are many types of angels. In the back of your notes, um, I've listed some references to angels and the different kinds of angels that I just pulled off a line, offline, uh, from a Jeff, uh, a Jeff, a guy named Jeffrey Krantz. Uh, and, and we talked about this, this exact description is in your Joshua Bible study around, uh, session twelve and thirteen. We talked a lot about angels and demons, and we'll reference some of that tonight. We won't go into the depth that we did last time or in the study of Joshua. You can go back and listen to some of those previous discussions. But there are different kinds of angels. Now, what we have done in modern Christianity is we've kind of, uh, um, just dumbed down this idea of angels and demons, God and Satan. So most of the time when we think of spiritual warfare, we just think of God and the devil, demons and angels. Well, that's a good, you know, basic understanding, but it's much deeper than that, much, much deeper than that. There are positions and there are ranks, just like the United States military has different branches of the military. We have the Army, we have the Air Force, we have the Navy, we have the Marines. In those different branches, or those different divisions of the overall United States military, all of those men and women would be considered, uh, uh, soldiers or serving in the United States military. But yet, some are flying planes, some are better, uh, at underwater tactics, some are better at hand-to-hand combat. Uh, they have different specialties. In the angelic realms, we have angels, and then we have fallen angels. Now, fallen angels are angels that followed Satan and rebelled against God, their creator. All angels were created before the world was created. So angels existed before the world was created in Genesis one because they watched God create the world. They watch as their creator now creates the habitation for his next creation, humankind, animal kind, mankind. The angelic creation watches the creator create this new space called earth. Now, in that understanding, there are angels that are holy, there are angels that are fallen. They're both angels. They both have bodies, they both have the ability to influence. In Scripture, there are angels that grab people by the hand and say, "Lot, Lot's wife, Lot's daughters, come with me." And they basically pull Lot and his family out of Sodom and Gomorrah, knowing that there is a physical time that they cannot adjust, that God is going to bring down uh, hellfire and brimstone and just destroy Sodom and Gomorrah. There are other times that angels fight supernaturally and slay men in the natural. Uh, there's a, uh, I can't think of the reference, but there's the story of angels slain a hundred and eighty-five thousand soldiers that were coming up against God's people. There are times where angels deliver messages. There are times that angels minister and strengthen people. We'll see that example here in Daniel, chapter ten. So there's many examples of different kinds or different positions or missions of this created being called an angel. Now, there are seraphim angels, cherubim angels, there are watcher angels, there are fallen angels, there are different types of angels. So when we talk about angels, don't, uh, just chalk them up as all of them are the good guys, or all of them have halos, wings, uh, and sit on a cloud and play a harp. We've done it injustice, um, a lot in our artistry. Uh, and if you collect those little, uh, you know, uh, fat baby angels, if you look at angels like Cupid at Valentine's Day, we've kind of dumbed angels down to just this, this type of creature that, you know, is kind of fairy tale-ish. Well, in Scripture, and listed on page eight of your notes, uh, there are, uh, you know, I've just put different, different styles and positions of angels that you'll find in your Scripture. And that's what the last part of your notes we'll talk about. When we talk about, uh, three angels that have great position, we can see a ranking, like in the United States military, you would have your admiral, your general, you would have, uh, um, your, um, uh, you know, sergeant, lieutenant. You, you have your entry-level positions, you have your mid-level positions, you have your, your executive level positions, all the way up to the, to the, uh, you know, President of the United States that has, you know, full control of the divisions of the military. Uh, and I'm fumbling that ball a little bit just because of my, my, uh, uh, lack of experience in the military. But we do understand this. In spiritual realms, there are three angels mentioned in Scripture that hold a specific exalted position, and those are called archangels. Now, the three archangels mentioned in Scripture are Gabriel and Michael. Those are the two that we know all throughout Scripture. And then there's the third archangel that we, some of us know, but many of us don't realize that the third archangel mentioned in Scripture is Lucifer, or Satan himself. So when Lucifer was created as a holy angel, he was created with such position and power that he was considered an archangel. Now, we know in Ephesians, chapter six, which we'll read in a little bit, that there are different levels of angels on the, on the demonic side, on the evil side. And we know in Scripture that there are different levels of angels on the holy side. When God creates something, just because it sins doesn't mean that it's no longer used for its created purpose. When God creates a person or an angel, it continues to have its giftiness, its identity, and its position whether it follows God or not. For example, a musician like Lucifer, he was a worshiping angel, he was a musical angel. He was created as an actual instrument himself. We can read that in Scripture in Ezekiel, uh, and, and Isaiah. When we read about, in the description of Lucifer, he was actually kind of this create, this angel that, that didn't necessarily pick up instruments and play, but he was an instrument. Um, and so he was, his position was worship. Now, when he fell, that didn't mean that he could no longer use music, play music, worship, or, or make sound. We know this, that Satan uses music as one of his number-one instruments to, to seduce people into evil activity. A, a great musician of the day, and I won't name any just to avoid any kind of conflict, but there are hundreds of musicians who God created to worship God through playing an instrument, singing vocally, um, writing music, creating music. And we've seen many musicians who have spent their lives, and they've won every award, they've won every, uh, they've sold millions of albums, millions of records. They've influenced billions of people with their sound. But their message is anything but holy, anything that honors God. They have spent their life using their talent to worship drugs, sex, and rock and roll. When they die, they will be held accountable. They'll stand before God, and God will say, "Hey, man, I gave you a great voice. I gave you the ability to play that instrument better than anybody else. I gave you the ability to write and create. What did you use it for? Did you use it for my glory? Or did you use it for the enemy's glory, or your own glory?" Now, just because they didn't use it for God doesn't mean God took that away from them. So when we think about angels, we need to understand that there were angels created to worship God, there are angels created to watch over mankind, there are angels created to deliver messages, there are angels created to interpret messages, there are angels created to minister to people, there are angels created to, to worship God and to, to, um, for different purposes. Now, when those angels that chose to stay with God, they continue in their function, their create, their creativeness to honor God with their giftedness. Other angels that have fallen from God still use their giftedness, but against God or for evil's glory, not God's glory. So, when we think about archangels, and we think about angels specifically, let's not put them all in the same box. Now, let's also know this, that different angels have different power and different experience. Gabriel in Scripture, every time that we see Gabriel the angel, now, I'm not going to say he's limited to this, but this is his primary function. Gabriel primarily functions at revealing the Messiah, delivering messages about Jesus, the Coming One. Uh, about, uh, we, we saw Gabriel in the previous chapter. He is describing and interpreting things. He is, he is a messenger angel, if you will. I can, I can see God on his throne saying, "Gabriel, come to me, I need you to go deliver this message to this person. I need you to go interpret the vision that I gave Daniel, because Daniel can't comprehend what he's, what he's seen. So would you go and give him clear understanding of what that dream was about, or that vision was about?" Gabriel was, is a messenger angel. All through Scripture, when we see Michael the archangel, Michael is not usually delivering a message. He usually is delivering a sword. He's got a sword in one hand, and he is the prince-angel over the nation of Israel. So when we read Revelation, chapter two and three, we see the seven churches, and to each of those churches, Jesus wrote himself, "To the angel of the church of Ephesus, to the angel of the church of Tharretar, to the angel of the church of Laodicea." Now, that is to the angel that protects those churches. It's also to the pastor or the overseer of that group. But, but as men die who pastors churches, angels are given a position for eternity. And so Michael is the prince or the archangel over God's people, Israel. So if there is one angel who is, uh, general or, or over the command of God's people, it is Michael. We always see Michael fighting the war on behalf of God. Now, are there other warring angels? Yes. Are there other messenger angels other than Gabriel? Yes. Are there other worshiping angels other than Lucifer? Yes. But these three angels were created distinctly to have power and dominion over these three realms of God's, uh, uh, kingdom, over God's purpose. Now, when Lucifer rebels against God, he takes with him. A third of the angels or a portion of the angels. They all fall and follow Lucifer's pride and rebellion and greed for power, lust for power. But we see Michael and Gabriel and other angels who stay true to God. Now that gives us another glimpse into the angelic realm. Angels are not robots. Angels are not forced to serve or love God. Angels themselves are eternal beings. And angels suffer or are rewarded for their action. There are angels today locked up into the abyss and we've read in Revelation where they will be released. There are angels that will be cast into the fiery lake of fire for eternity because they rebelled against God. They don't just cease to exist, God doesn't give them a free pass, he didn't say, oh, I know you had, no, he says, this is the consequence. So when we look at how angels choose their eternal destiny. Mankind also chooses his own destiny the exact same way. So when we read this about Daniel seeing this angel. He is in awe, he is perplexed, he can't believe he's seen into the supernatural realm. In verse nine, when I heard the sound of the words and while I heard the sound of his words, I was in a deep sleep. On my face, with my face to the ground, he scared me, all my strength left me. I could not retain my strength, verse eight. And then verse ten, suddenly a hand touched me. Which made me tremble on my knees and the palm on my hands and he said to me, oh, Daniel, man. Greatly beloved, now underline greatly beloved, Daniel is called greatly beloved. John, one of the twelve disciples, is also called beloved. Now the two men in scripture who are called beloved. Both at the end of their life write great books about prophetic. And supernatural prophecy. John on the island of Patmos writes the book of Revelation. Daniel is in this, in this time of his life is probably in his eighties. And he is being given visions of end time stuff. It's it's a title that God, Abraham was a friend of God, these are beloved. God calls you something based upon your relationship with him. God has a purpose that he'll reveal to you. Based on your relationship. But what we see here is a physical angel, I mean a supernatural angel. A spiritual angel on God's team touches physical man. Now where else in scripture do we see that? We see that with Jesus Christ himself in the garden of Gethsemane. Before, on the night of his arrest, when he's sweating drops of blood. When he, when he is in such agony about going to the cross, the Bible says angels come and minister to him. Now, some of you listening to me have a passion for medicine, you have a passion for nursing. Surgery, you'd love to be there when people are sick, you love to diagnose physical body conditions. Uh you serve in the realm of medicine, medical, um psychology. Uh um uh healing the mind, the body, you, that's your job, that's your description. So if you were in the, in the military, you would be in the mash tent, you would be a a medic, you would be. You know, the guy with the the red cross on his shirt in the battle, you're not necessarily shooting everybody, you're trying to heal and fix everybody. Uh that's the same way with these angels. There are angels who are positioned and called ministering angels. So this guy here ministers to him, he reaches out of the supernatural. Into the natural and touches him. Now that in itself gives us great insight into supernatural battle. Now, I don't wanna stray too far because I wanna stay on the text. But if the enemy, if if God's angels, holy angels can do this. Can fallen angels or the enemy do the same thing? Can the enemy do things that are supernatural? That we go, oh my God, that had to come from outside of our realm, outside of our time domain. Something stepped into our time, something stepped into our domain, our realm. And did something that's impossible in the physical. Just because it's a miracle, just because it's impossible in the physical. Does not automatically mean that it is from God. The enemy can do quote-unquote miracles, the enemy can do su- supernatural things. The enemy, when when uh Moses and Aaron go before Pharaoh. And he throws down the rod and it turns into a snake, Pharaoh is not impressed. His magician who are evil do the same thing. Now, God trumps them because Moses's Aaron's rod swallows up the other snakes. But Pharaoh was used to a cultic demonic power manifesting itself also. So we as believers have gotta grasp this supernatural warfare that's happening. Verse ten. Suddenly a hand touched me, which made me tremble on my knees and on the palm of my hands, he said, oh, Daniel, man greatly beloved. Understand the words that I speak to you and stand upright, for I have now been sent to you. While he was speaking this word to me, I stood trembling. So the angel, angels that are from God, a- and we've talked about this before. Every time a holy angel appears to a physical man or woman. Most of the time that person falls down and worships that angel. Most of the time that person falls down and is is you know, face down, bowing worship. Submissive to that angel. A holy angel every time will say, do not be afraid. Don't worship me, worship God alone, stand upright, I'm not the creator. I'm just an angel. Now to us, angels are, oh, this is a big deal. But to the angel, they're like, hey, I'm not a big deal. Our Father in heaven, the one that we both worship is a big deal. Remember, there's angels around the throne of God that shout back and forth, holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. They're not broken records, that's not their only programmed language, that's not the only thing. They are in awe of God himself. So, when we see this, an unholy angel will let you worship him. An unholy fallen angel will let you and desire and trick you into worshiping him. This is what happened in Genesis six. Fallen angels are on the earth and they are setting up physical uh kingdoms. Physical towns, physical cities, physical nations. They are allowing cultures to worship them. Behind every demon, behind or every idol is a fallen angel to be worshiped. Behind every idol is also a demon, we'll talk about demons in a minute. Fallen angels and demons are not the same, they are separate beings, they're separate. A fallen angel has a body, has a purpose. And is fully in their created form, yet sinful and fallen. So back to our text, verse eleven. And he says to me, oh, Daniel, great belo- greatly beloved, understand the words that I speak to you. Stand up, for I have now been sent to you. While he was speaking this word, I, Daniel, stood up. Verse twelve, now look, we're gonna get an insight or glimpse to spiritual warfare here. The crazy thing is, it's in your Old Testament. Remember, we're Old Testament, this is, this is not even Jesus yet, this isn't, you know, uh this is. It says five or six hundred years before Jesus is ever born. Spiritual warfare here. Verse twelve, then he said to me, fear not, uh or do not fear, Daniel. For from the first day that you set your heart to understand. Understand what? The vision and the dream that he got up here. Remember, Daniel's like, I can't believe this vision, I can't believe this dream. I didn't even know what it means. He's referencing what God has given him as a prophetic word. He goes into a time of mourning and fasting, he's overcome by it. From the minute that you set your heart to understand, verse twelve, and to humble yourself fasting. Before your God, your words were heard and I came because, and I have come because of your word. Now God hears Daniel's cry and he sends an angel to deliver his message. Does God still do the same thing today? Absolutely. Verse thirteen, but the angel says, now God dispatched me, he sent me, but this is what happened. But the prince of the kingdom of Persia withstood me twenty-one days. Now that, that passage right there, that verse right there. Is something that you could dig into for a year. Uh and just study. But the prince of the kingdom of Persia withstood me for twenty-one days. I'm gonna read the verse then we'll come back. And behold, Michael, one of the chief princes. Came to help me, for I had been left alone there with the king of Persia. So verse thirteen is a glimpse into the spiritual battle, the spiritual realm. Uh that is being waged in the the, i- in the spirit, in the spirit world. Here's the, here's the battle. God dispatches an angel like a Pony Express rider in the eighteen hundreds. He's got the, he's got the letter, he's got the message, he's got the scroll, he's got the interpretation. And this, in this reference, this, this angel is going to interpret the dream, interpret the vision. It's gonna make clear so Daniel's not uh no longer confused. Supernaturally, this angel is traveling through spiritual territory. Now, in the Pony Express days, a Pony Express rider would travel sometimes up to sixteen or twenty miles a day. Which doesn't seem very far for us in cars, but through uncharted territories on a horse, that was a long distance. And they would travel through territory that would belong to the Indian, the Native American. So Apache territory or Comanche territory, whatever territory they were going through. The enemy did not want them to deliver the message. That Pony Express rider had to be on guard, he was watching, he was, he was observing, he. He had learned from other riders who had already been through there, he was, he was trying to avoid capture. This angel has to go through supernatural spiritual territory. To get to Daniel. Now physically, Daniel is in Babylon. Physically, he is not in God's holy land, he's not in the promised land of Joshua, he's not in Jerusalem, he's not in Israel, remember. He was taken captive like uh sixty years earlier, he's been living in a foreign country. So physically, he's in enemy territory. But spiritually, he's in enemy territory also. This angel from God is traveling through spiritual territory of evil. To get to the space on physical earth to deliver or interpret a spiritual message. When we can grasp that, we start to go, oh wow, this spiritual war is bigger than I thought. It is the same as a soldier in Vietnam. Trying to get through enemy lines. He goes from the American side through Vietnam's lines to a base or to a POW that's in prison. Like in the Rambo movies, he's gotta get through the enemy's territory to go deliver the POW. But in that journey, this angel got caught. This angel from God got captured by a fallen angel, by a prince of Persia. Read verse thirteen, but the prince of the kingdom of Persia. Now where was Persia? Where was the Persian Medo Empire? Where was this, that was on earth, but it's also representative of a spiritual kingdom. So he gets captured, it says, verse thirteen, but when the prince of the kingdom of Persia withstood me. He starts to fight against him. He he, he comes against him with demonic forces. Angelic, fallen angelic forces come against holy angelic forces. So this angel is withheld to get to Daniel for twenty-one days. This isn't just something we can skim over, it's something we need to grasp. That some of us have been praying for three days that God would answer our prayer. Now God has dispatched the answer, but there is a supernatural battle. For God to get his message to you. The enemy is encamped about us, trying to prevent God from getting to us. From preventing the message. Now sometimes that's through sin, sometimes that's through our own rebellion, our own issue. That God's like, man, I'm trying to get through to you, but you won't give up your sins, so therefore the enemy's got a right to you. And he's set up an encampment around you, I can't get through. There's other times where where we are under attack or we're under persecution by no fault of our own. Some of it's self-induced, some of it is, is just the fact that we live in a fallen world and we're in a battle. Verse thirteen again. But the prince of the kingdom of Persia withstood me twenty-one days. But behold, Michael, one of the chief princes. Came to help me, for I had been left alone there with the king of Persia. So we have a lower level angel. That cannot fight against the king of Persia. Now, the prince over him withstood him. And I guess put him in, in the cell or put him in the hands of the king of Persia. Which shows two different references, one is over this kingdom, one is over, you know, one's a prince, one's a king. That's a different level of authority. So it's liken maybe to, and I'm not, really not trying to dumb this down, but this is just kinda where my brain goes. The sheriff arrests him and puts him in, in, in the prison or in the hands of the deputy. Uh so the prince withstood this angel, the king is holding him. The king has now got him where he can't get out. This isn't happening in the physical. There's no physical prince or physical king that could capture an angel with a sword. Or capture an angel with a knife or a gun or a a a tank. Uh physical weapons cannot deter spiritual beings. You can't lock a demon up or an angel up or a fallen angel up in a prison cell. You can lock a human up in a prison cell with brick and mortar, but an angelic beam will walk right through it. We see this in the New Testament with Paul. We see it with uh Silas when they're set free. Verse thirteen again, but Michael, one of the chief princes, indicating that Michael is an archangel. He is here called a chief prince angel. So Michael has more power, more authority, maybe he's, you know, this is a Pony Express rider. Now we got an angel that's a warrior. So this angel probably was trained in, in a little bit of combat, but more in in communications. So he needs a stronger angel to come rescue him. We see this picture spiritually. Let me read a couple more, then we're gonna go through our Bible and see other references to spiritual battles and spiritual warfare. Verse fourteen, now I've come to make you understand what will happen to your people in later days. For the vision refers to many days yet to come. When the angel had spoken such words to me, I turned my face towards the ground and became speechless. And suddenly having won, the likeness of the sons of men touched my lips. Then opened my mouth and spoke saying to me, s- uh saying to him who was stood, who stood before me. My lord, because of the vision, my sorrows have overwhelmed me and I have retained no strength. For how can this servant of the Lord talk with you, my lord? As for me, no strength remains in me. Now, nor in the breadth of life, nor is there breadth of life in me. Uh and we'll see again, this angel touches him again, uh and talks to him, we'll pick up there uh next time. But I wanna talk about Ephesians six tonight. So when we look at spiritual warfare, let's go to Ephesians chapter six. And let's get some glimpses into the spiritual battle. Now this is um a very well-known passage of scripture. But it amazes me how i- in my own life, I'm not pointing the finger at you or or other church members. Uh or other believers, but in the church, I see this lack of understanding or preparedness. Let's look at Genet- or Ephesians chapter six. And let's get a glimpse into the supernatural realm of spiritual warfare. Ephesians six, verse ten, finally my brethren, finally Cameron, finally White Stone Church, put your name in the Bible. Be strong in the Lord and the power of his might. Cameron, White Stone Church, put your name there, he just said, finally brother, be strong in the power of the Lord. Be strong in his might. Put on the whole armor of God that you will be able to stand against the wild schemes, tricks of the devil. Hey Cameron, hey church, hey believer, put on your armor. It's that clear. It's that clear. Why? Well, he tells us, verse twelve. Hey Cameron, you don't wrestle against Saudi Arabia, you don't wrestle against Russia. You don't wrestle against, uh, uh, China, you don't wrestle against the gang across the street, you don't wrestle against flesh and blood. So you need to put on holy spiritual armor. Uh, God, okay, you don't wrestle against flesh and blood, but you wrestle against principalities. Now in your notes, I've, I've outlined principalities, these are levels or realms of demonic beings or fallen angels. Against powers, against rulers of darkness of this age, against spiritual hosts of wickedness in the heavenly places. Now verse twelve, we've talked about it before, we'll, we'll pick up a little bit on it next week. Verse twelve breaks down four levels of spiritual demonic activity, principalities, powers. Rulers of darkness, spiritual hosts, angels, the word hosts is angels. Angels of wickedness in heavenly places, in the heavens, supernatural realms. Just as we saw in Daniel, there is a prince of Persia. There are demonic fallen angels, there, there, there are evil forces that are assigned. Supernatural territory across the globe. There, there is a spirit of the enemy that is coming against America. He's been assigned to America, as Michael has been assigned to Israel. There is a fallen angel assigned to Israel. As God has positioned different angels over the seven churches. There are different fallen angels attacking those different realms or spheres of supernatural power of the church. There are different angelic fallen angelic powers over different physical territories of our earth. Um, Pastor Robert Morris of Gateway Church in Dallas, I, I, I wanna share this story. About three years ago, he almost died twice. It was, uh, before Easter Sunday in mid-March, he's on, at his property, uh, um. In the middle of the week, which is out of town on a ranch, he has, he has a, a ranch outside of Dallas. Uh, and he becomes deathly ill. Long story short, they emergently starflight him to the hospital, uh, he should have died twice. Nobody knows what caused him to get sick, and nobody knows what caused him to live. God protected him, the enemy attacked him. Long story short, you could go to his website and hear his own story and get all the details, but this is what happened. Six, eight weeks later, after he's healed from this life-threatening, uh, issue with his stomach and, and, and organs. Uh, he is healed and, uh, and he is re- resting and recuperating at home. Six, eight weeks later, Jack Hayford, from the founder of the Four Square Church in California, calls him and says, hey, Robert. I was praying and, and I have this question, did you travel outside of America? Before you got sick in mid-March? And Robert had to think a little bit, he goes, yeah, I went and did a conference in another country. And I won't name the country, cause it's irrelevant, but it, it's a country that's not known for worshiping God. He said, yeah, I went to another country to do a conference, uh, for believers that are under persecution there. And Jack Hayford said, the Lord revealed to me that you didn't have enough prayer covering. Before you went into the territory that you were not accustomed to. So just like in this physical army. When, when we sent our, our young men to Vietnam in the sixties and seventies. They went into the jungles of Vietnam, so therefore their camouflage clothing. Mimicked the, the terrain that they went into. So it was darker greens, darker, uh, jungle green, if you would, camouflage. They got prepared for moisture, they got prepared for wet damp. Uh, their guns to their communication devices, to the clothes they wore, everything about Vietnam. As much as best we could, we trained our soldiers to go into that territory. Because all these boys came from Mississippi, California, Kansas, Texas, New York City. We were, we're not used to jungles anywhere in the United States, we're not used to that terrain. So we had to go through boot camp, we had to go through training, we had to get prepared physically. To be best prepared as possible to go into that terrain. Fast forward to Desert Storm, uh, uh, in the nineties, more of my generation. My friends go to Desert Storm, in Desert Storm, we're in the desert. We're not in dark greens camouflage, this is a new camouflage, we're, we have desert colors, different, different camouflage. We're not worried about moisture, we're, we're worried about sand jamming the guns, we're not worried about. If, we're not worried about jungle rats and, 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 uh, snakes, we're worried about desert conditions. So when, when Jack Hayford calls Robert Morris and he says, hey, listen, Robert. The enemy attacked you. Because you didn't have proper covering when you went out of the country, you went into the enemy's territory. To preach this conference, in the physical, but in the spirit, you stuck out like a sore thumb because. There was not proper protection and preparation over you. So if you went to Desert Storm, wearing the camouflage of Vietnam. You would have stuck out like a sore thumb, if you would have gone to desert, if you would have gone to Vietnam. With Desert Storm camouflage on, you would have stuck out like a sore thumb. Supernaturally, we've gotta get this concept through our minds, that when we go in to do God's work. We've got to get prepared for the spiritual climate of which we walk into. That's why sometimes we get beat up. People, we, we, we get gung ho about spiritual warfare. And we wanna like take on the devil, and we want to take on every demon of hell, and we wanna take on all the fallen angels, and so when we pray. We start to bind and we start to pray against every force of evil out there. When God told us just to pray for this specific thing. He didn't say, okay, Cameron, I want you to go into battle, here is your M sixteen. I just want you to spray all your bullets at once and just do a three sixty and you just fire at random. Well, all of a sudden, guys that do that in physical warfare, they train not to do that. Police officers train that, hey, listen, when you're in a battle on the streets and you, and, and all of a sudden somebody pulls a gun on you. You don't just pull your gun out and fire fifteen of your fifteen shots, all you got is a magazine of fifteen bullets. You don't just shoot them all at once, you methodically use those bullets to the best of your ability, you don't just stick your gun up and start shooting and. You know, you don't just, just launch bombs over here, you know, a boxer doesn't just get in the ring and just start punching and hoping one of it. He strategically starts to fight. And he uses the warfare, his weapons, he uses his spiritual ability. To hit the target with the most deathly blow, the most powerful punch that he can on the target that God told them to shoot at. So when Robert Morris comes back, he shares this spiritual concept with us at a pastor's conference. And he teaches us, hey, listen, I almost died because spiritually I went unprepared. When we talk about the armor of God, and we'll pick up here next week, uh, when we talk about the armor of God. How many of us go to work every day? We leave our house, but we didn't put on our armor. We don't gird our waists with the belt of truth, shot our feet with the preparation of the gospel of peace. We don't put on the breastplate of righteousness, we don't take up the shield of faith, we don't put on the helmet of salvation. We don't take up the sword of the spirit, the word of God, we don't pray in the Holy Spirit. See, these are supernatural weapons, supernatural protection that God's given us. Because there's angels of holiness being dispatched on your behalf. But there's also demonic unholy fallen angels that are warring against you, warring against. Your nation, warring against your school district, warring against your, uh, um, city government. Warring against your finances, there is God's plan, there's the enemy's plan. We're not gonna give the credit more, uh, we're not gonna give the enemy more credit than he's due. But we're sure not going to just say, oh, he's just this little, you know, God has defeated him. But you and I have to pick up our power and our weapons. Because we're still in the battle until Jesus Christ returns. We're still on the warfare, uh, on the, on the battlefield in this warfare. So we'll pick up there, I got, I do have a question, I think, and again, if you ever have questions, I'll do my best to answer them live, but. Uh, continue to send them, you can email them to me at the church website. Uh, my, my, uh, email is Cameron at WhitestonechurchDX dot com. You can email them directly to me, I'll, I'll respond to you. Um, but I wanna say this, um, last distinction, and we'll pick up here on spiritual warfare again next time. When we talk about demons, demons are not fallen angels. Demons are disembodied spirits. Demons pos- need a body to possess. Angels, fallen or not, already have their body. They, they don't, uh, leave their body to go possess them. A demon is a spirit without a body. Demons came from the Nephilim, the Nephilim, Genesis chapter six. When they're drowned in the flood, their de- their spirits are still around, their spirits are still roaming, trying to find a place to inhabit. So we'll talk more next week about demons, fallen angels, spiritual warfare. Uh, but more importantly about, about, um, putting on our armor as believers to fight this battle. So, um, here is a quick question. Um, and, uh. Okay, this is, is this from Lujin? Hi, Lujin, love you. Uh, does the King James Bible talk about the angel Raphael? Uh, which is mentioned in the Apocrypha and, and maybe in Enoch one, uh, is that right? Or, 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 uh, one Enoch? Um, okay, so, so the angel Raphael, uh, is not mentioned in scripture. Um, I don't know, Lujin, if it's in the Apocrypha or, uh, first Enoch or the, or Enoch one. I'm assuming that it is, since you said it is, so, or Stacy said it is. Uh, but here's the deal, there are extra biblical books, and we talked a little bit about this before, there's the Book of Enoch. Uh, there's the Book of Jasher, um, there's other books that are, that are not in our Bible. Uh, some of them are in the Apocrypha, uh, which would be, um, I believe nine books. That are in a lot of, uh, early Bibles, uh, specifically, um, um. Uh, well, I, I forgot, specifically Catholic Bibles, uh, would still use a lot of the Apocrypha. Um, for whatever reason, those books did not make it into the canonization of the Bible. Now, that doesn't mean that the information in them can't be trusted. It doesn't mean that the information in them is inaccurate or wrong. What it simply makes it is that the, the information in those books would not be considered inspired by the Holy Spirit. The books that are in our Bible are here because the Holy Spirit inspired them, now these other books. Uh, like the Book of Jasher, uh, the Book of Enoch, all of our, a lot of our writers reference those books, so. In the time of Jesus and the turn of, of, uh, um, uh, what's called second temple literature. Uh, before, the, the temple that Jesus went to, the rabbis, the scholars, the Pharisees, the Sadducees. The men of, of, um. Of that day and age, they read those books, they read other books. Not just the Bible of the Old Testament. They read that from, as historical account and understanding. It wasn't necessarily inspired word of God. So, um, is there an angel called Raphael? I'm sure there is, uh, I'm sure that's in those, uh, uh, apocryphal books. Um, uh, but is, but he's, but to my understanding, he's not mentioned in the Bible itself. Doesn't mean that that's wrong, doesn't mean that, uh, um, it's not, that it's inaccurate, it's just not necessarily considered to be inspired. Um, so a lot of information that we receive. Uh, to understand our Bible comes from extracurricular or extra biblical books. Um, the danger is this, um, especially when we watch shows that make it to. The History Channel or, uh, shows that want to say Jesus, Mary, Mary Magdalene. Jesus had several kids, uh, books that say, you know, the, the, uh, demons don't, you know, shows that want to. Destroy the credibility of the Bible, there are other books out there that are not. Um, to be trusted. So some of the books that, um, that people will reference, well, in this book, it says. Jesus had four wives and thirteen kids, and in this book, it says this or that. Those, uh, would be books that would obviously not be, uh, trusted. But the apocryphal books were read, uh, as, uh, informational or historical accounts. By the leaders, uh, of the second temple, uh, period. And so I hope that kinda answered your question, I know that's a, that's a, that's a tricky one, but, um. So anyway, we'll pick up here next week, we'll dive into more spiritual warfare, God bless you, thank you so, so much. Uh, for joining us tonight, thank you.